Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 14th, 2002 meeting of the Halton City Council. We welcome you here tonight, those of you who are in the council chamber. We're very pleased that you're interested in what goes on in Halton City and have made the effort to be here tonight and participate in your local government. To those of you who are watching on cable TV on Channel 50, HCTV, we welcome you to our meeting tonight. The first item on the agenda is our invocation and pledge, and Councilmember Tracy Henderson, I believe you-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Dr. Jerry Chisholm, the senior pastor at St. Luke United Methodist Church, to do that for me tonight.
Thank you. Will you rise? Let us pray. Eternal and gracious God, we give you thanks for life, and for community, and for belonging. There are concerns and problems that confront us as a city, and there are joys and points of pride that we all are infilled. But in an age when war and suffering and fear abound, give us sober minds for judgment. Enable us to finally put aside our egos and selfish control, so that your Spirit of grace and dignity might rule in Halton City. Lead us now in the business of our city, and grant us one thing more: a grateful heart. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and your citizens and republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Chisholm. We are glad to have you here tonight, and thank you for that invocation. We have three presentations to make tonight, and I have the privilege of making the first two, and that will be followed by Fran Burns making some presentations regarding the neighborhood Pastor Van Zandt, are you here tonight? Would you please join me here at the podium, please? One of the things that makes Halton City very special is the quality of its people and the nice things they do to make life better for a whole lot of other people. And the Fort Worth Christian Center has a reputation throughout this community for doing just that. It's my privilege tonight to present this proclamation. Whereas the Fort Worth Christian Center has donated its services and facilities for the fifth year to host the 2001 Halton City Senior Citizens Christmas Dinner, serving 200 people and feeding 97 shut-ins; and whereas the Fort Worth Christian Center helped the seniors to bag donated canned goods for distribution; and whereas the Fort Worth Christian Center has prepared and served a Christmas dinner to hundreds of needy people this Christmas, as it has done in past years; and whereas through their dedication Pastor Steve Van Zandt and his wife Gay have helped make this huge undertaking a success, therefore I, Calvin White, Mayor of the City of Halton City, do hereby extend this expression of our esteem and our best wishes to the members of this congregation of the Fort Worth Christian Church and Christian Center, and Steve Van Zandt and his wife Gay for the many contributions and services to our community, with our best wishes for many years of continued success in the future. Pastor Van Zandt? Would you like to address the group tonight?
Thanks.
I am impressed. A minister with a short message. I was telling one of the council members before we came in here, when I was in the ministry, I was continually reminded that there is no such thing as a short, bad sermon. And we do appreciate you, Pastor Van Zandt, and all you do. You're a light shining in this community, and a lot of people look to you for their quality of life because of what you do. The second presentation I have tonight is to a very special young man, Matthew Danford. Matthew, would you and your parents please join me here at the podium tonight? I want you to take a look at this young man, because you're going to find that he's a very special young man, and we're going to find out why in just a moment. I'm going to ask Mom or Dad, one of you, to tell us what we're celebrating tonight, and why this young man is so special to us, as well as introduce the people who are here with you.
Kind of hit us by surprise here.
Come a little bit closer.
Didn't know we were going to have to speak. This is our son, Matthew Danford, and he is being honored with a trip to Australia by the People-to-People Student Ambassadors of the world. It's been since 1941 or '42, President Eisenhower started it, and they recognize outstanding students based on presidential merit achievements, and with nice teachers like Ms. Peyton. He's got his teacher from the fourth grade here, and she wrote him a wonderful letter of recognition, and it's just a real privilege and honor to let him do this.
You need to come back and tell us how he was selected, what he did that caught the attention of the judges.
It was based upon presidential merit achievements through tests throughout, I guess, second grade on up, and that's basically all I know.
Okay. So he is here because of academic achievement, and that's really something to celebrate. This young man is a student, I believe, at Halton Middle, and before that at West Birdville. So it's my privilege now to present Matthew this certificate of recognition for this achievement. Whereas Matthew Danford has been recommended by the People-to-People delegation to participate in the People-to-People Student Ambassador Program, and whereas Matthew Danford has been invited to become a member of the Texas delegation representing the United States in Australia in the summer of 2002, and whereas People-to-People Student Ambassadors represent America overseas, experience new cultures, and make lifelong friends. Now I, therefore Calvin White, Mayor of the City of Halton City, do hereby tender this certificate of recognition to Matthew Danford, commending him for his many accomplishments at such a young age, and extending my personal wishes and on behalf of the council and all of our citizens with this expression of our appreciation for the fine way Matthew will represent our city in Australia, and wish him continued success in the future. Matthew, congratulations. Matthew, would you like to say something to this group?
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. and Ms. Danford. I know you're very proud of this young man, and we all are, and we're happy to have him as one of our shining students here in Halton City. And I do see he learns quickly. Yeah, he picked up from Steve the way to endear himself to the hearts of the people around him. Fran, where are you? I believe you have some presentations you want to make at this time. Come forth, please, and tell us what you're going to be doing.
Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Beautification Board, I'm here tonight to recognize those who won in the Neighborhood Contest for Decorating Christmas Lights. The Halton City Board brought out the Christmas Light Decorations in 1986. It was a way to decorate our city, make it beautiful for everyone to enjoy, and we also felt like it was a way that people would get to know their neighbors. If they knew who their neighbors were and got to know them and know when they came and gone, then they could kind of watch out for each other, and it has been a success. Streets with at least 90 percent of participation have a plaque at the end of their street, and it shows that they've won each year. Probably you've seen these, and each year that they have 90 percent participation, we add another year. And I think it's been a wonderful program, and personally, I think this year we had more decorations than we've ever had before. I think it's wonderful. My husband and I have lived here for 39 years. Maybe I shouldn't have told how long, huh? 39 years, and I think every year more people decorate, and I'm very proud of Halton City. We have some of our people here tonight that have won, and I'm going to call their names, and not in any specific order, but by section in which they won. If they're here, I would like to come forth and stand behind me, and just stay standing until everyone gets their certificate. If they're not here, we'll just call their name and bypass them at the time. David's going to help me tonight. David, if you'll come forth and stand right here, I'll call these names out.
David, you might want to turn around toward the camera where everyone can see that. Yep, correct.
There are six sections. There are three winners in each section. One is for the best use of a theme, best use of lights, and most creative. Again, if you're here, please come forward. Section one, best use of a theme for 2001, is Marla Muncie. Is Marla here? She's here. She lives at 1862 Oakwood Street. Best use of lights, Edna Fay Lightfoot, 5204 Lower Birdville Road. Most creative, Michael Waters, 2310 Maguire Street. Section two, best use of a theme for 2001, Glenn Harrison, sorry, Glenn Garrison, yes, 5613 Midway Road. Best use of lights, Michelle Clark, 3400 Eastridge Drive. Most creative lights, K.L. and Carol Lamar, 4516 D Lane. Best use of theme, section three, J.T. and Jolene Armstrong, 5408 Mack. Best use of lights, Wayne Wright, 5224 Vicki. Most creative, Clara and Ronnie Barnes, 4913 Stanley Keller. Section four, best use of a theme, Terry Ferris, 5808 Jane Anne. Best use of lights, Lorraine Curtsey, 5953 Diamond Oaks. Most creative, Elodie and Martin Rasche, 5720 Diamond Oaks North. Section five, Javale Delarosa, 5648 Whitley Road. Best use of lights, Stephen Sharon LaFawn, 5400 Parkview Drive. Most creative, Hilda Aguilar, 5524 Dunson. Section six, Charlotte Perkey, best use of a theme, 5777 Rockport. Best use of lights, Belinda and Greg Kay, 5672 Rockport. Most creative, Jo and Sue Avalla, 5880 San Jacinto. Let's give all these people a nice hand. There are no losers in this contest, but these people were more outstanding than some of the others, and we're very proud for them, and we know that you're proud for them to be citizens of Halton City. We're going to have some refreshments. If you people would just step out in the hall, we'll be glad to come out and visit with you, okay? Let's give them another hand, please. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Williams, before you all get away, I think Councilmember Williams has something to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to get an excuse to go have some of the cookies and punch with them. I want to thank all you all for decorating your houses up and bringing the spirit to Halton City. I know a lot of them couldn't be here tonight. Probably a lot of them are still taking their decorations down. There were so many beautiful decorations in town. But if Steve Van Zandt hasn't left yet, is he still here? I know he's a man of many words. I want to also thank all the rest of the churches in Halton City that participated in helping out at Christmas, helping with the needy and helping with the elderly. And I did want to say with Steve Van Zandt, he has a guy that came to his place Christmas Day. I went down there and, you know, spied on him, make sure he was doing what all they said they were doing, and he's got a guy named Jonathan Arvel Yippi. And next year, I would like to challenge everybody to go by that church from 11:00 to 1:00 and see Jonathan Arvel Yippi. It is a sight to see, but my heart goes out to this gentleman and the work that he does in our city. They don't have Christmas the 25th of December. They have Christmas 52 weeks a year over there, and they help with our volunteer service board, and we appreciate each and every one of your members and each and every church member we have in Halton City that helps with this. Thank you.
And thank you, yes. We're ready to proceed with our agenda, and I might mention, all of you are welcome to stay for the duration. However, this would be a good transition if some of you would like to leave, if you have other things you need to be doing. So again, thanks to all of you for coming and for the reasons that brought you here. We come now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that are considered to be self-explanatory, and they will be acted on by the council with one motion. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. We have items number four through 14. Gentlemen, I'm ready to entertain a motion. Councilmember Avery.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number 13 for council discussion and the tabling of item number 14.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Hurley.
That's for a second.
Counsel, okay. If you will, gentlemen, register your vote, and that passes with unanimous vote. Councilmember Markham has the flu, is not here tonight, so that passes by unanimous vote. With regard to item number 13, Mr. Counselor, I think you have some comments you need to make before we take action on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. What you've got in front of you on item 13 is a proposed variance to the sidewalk and curb and gutter requirements that go with the plat that you just approved in item 12.
I think we have some folks who are not hearing. We either need to turn the volume up or-
I'll speak up a little bit.
-to the mic.
Mayor, this item is a variance to your subdivision regulations. This goes with item number 12, where you just approved the replat. The applicant has requested a variance from the sidewalk and curb and gutter regulations. I wanted to bring to the council's attention that your subdivision ordinance requires that in order for you to grant a variance or waiver, you need to make specific findings and include those into your minutes. So if the council is inclined to grant this variance tonight, you need to make the following findings. One, that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the land involved, such that the strict application of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of his land. Two, that strict application of the provisions of this ordinance is not necessary to promote the public health, safety, and welfare. Three, that the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to other property in the area. Four, that the granting of the waiver will not have the effect of preventing the orderly subdivision of other land in the area in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. And five, that the granting of the waiver will be in harmony with the spirit and purpose of this ordinance. I believe your city engineer spoke to you during the pre-council about the rationale behind the staff's recommendation and the PNC's recommendation on this, but if you do choose to grant this variance tonight, you need to specifically include in your motion that the findings that I've just read are applicable to this property.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the counselor's comments in this regard. What is your pleasure regarding item number 13? Councilmember Hurley.
Mayor, I move that we approve this variance under the conditions mentioned by the attorney.
Councilmember Avery.
Mayor, I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion before us? There being none, register your vote, gentlemen, and that carries unanimously. Do we need to take action on item number 14, or did the motion originally address that issue?
Mayor, your motion on the consent agenda has already tabled that item.
The next item on our agenda is the Visitor Citizens Forum. As far as we do not have anyone who's requested to address the council at this time, we move then into our public hearing section, and we have a number of those tonight, and I'll ask our city manager to address each of those first. Item number 15.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 15 is a request for building variance. Council currently has a 180-day moratorium on outside storage buildings. What you have before you is a request from Philip Cahill, address 5715 Colorado Court, asking to build an outside storage structure that will be 12 by 20 with a height of approximately 10 feet and 3 inches. The staff actually takes no position on this particular item. We did send out 31 letters on this particular item, of which returned, as mentioned by the city engineer. We had two letters that were against the item, three that were for. And as you consider this item during the public hearing, you may ask the city engineer to provide you with some more information for the public. Excuse me. The item that is later on the agenda here will technically not affect this item. This individual before, after the item that's later on the agenda, will still need a variance because this structure will still need a permit because it is 240 square feet.
Okay, I will open a public hearing at this time regarding the request that our city manager has just detailed. Do we have the party who is requesting this building variance present tonight who might like to address this before the council? They're not, that individual does not hear anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request for this building variance. Anyone wishing to speak against? There being none, I close the public hearing, and gentlemen, I'm ready for a motion regarding this request. Councilmember Williams.
I'm not ready for a motion yet. I'll wait for discussion.
Sir?
I'm not ready for a motion yet, and I'll wait for discussion.
Okay.
Mayor, may I comment? I'm just seeing somebody in the back row there. I know you asked for comments, either for or against, but-
I'm against, but I don't know if I'm 15 mark 20 because I'm on the high of the top of this quarter building, and I have a very close to-
You have a yellow card.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
But I was 20 down, and I'm on the stake office.
Would you like to address your concerns at this point, and then come back on item 20 if, okay, would you come forward, and I will reopen the public hearing then to accommodate that? I hope I didn't overlook you. I hope you weren't-
Well, I'm kind of shy with this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, for pointing that out. So the public hearing is reopened on this subject, and would you give your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes with-
Okay. I'm Teresa Smith. I'm the homeowner of 5728 Western Circle here in Halton City. I did not know of this situation until then today, when I proceeded to put up a storage building in my yard, not knowing that there was a permit involved in it. I am concerned with this because I went to Sutherland's in October to review, to get a storage building. They did not at that time say that there was any kind of permits. I bought the storage building. I got ill, had four surgeries in 13 days, and was out until now, when they proceeded to build this building, and I got shut down by the city. What shut me down was not only did I not have the proper size, I went with a 10 by 16 by 16 height building on my property. The height was a concern. They're saying that y'all were dropping it down to 12 feet instead of 16 feet. My concern is, is that I have a 32-foot eneasement from my house to my property line, and I'm asking for 10 foot. The house next to me, from their property line to their home, is another 26 foot. So we're not looking at this storage room affecting anything. It's in the backyard. It came under, I did get approval this past summer for building through the planning zoning. They had no problem with putting the building where I was putting it, but what I failed to be notified through the retail people is that you cannot build a building in Halton City without a permit from 10 to 16, and now we have an issue of height. And I'm here to make my facts known that, you know, they shouldn't be, number one, selling a building to somebody knowing that there is a thing pending that you cannot put a storage building on your property. You know, somebody should let somebody know about this. I don't get to read the newspaper, V and L, so I didn't know that this was an issue.
Okay, it sounds like, from what I'm understanding, you to say that your concern is probably more nearly fit under item number 20.
Okay.
You're not the person who requested this specific building variance?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? You are?
No.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm interested.
With your permission, we will, is that, gentlemen, the council, is it, is that your understanding?
She'll come under number 20 is where she'll come.
I will.
We'll give you an opportunity to come back and say the same thing, or to say, remember what I said while ago on that other item. Either way. Okay, I believe Councilmember Williams pointed out that he'd like to have some discussion before a motion is presented. That's not-
Well, if they want to have a motion, that's fine.
But you want to bring that card up here? I saw you come in a moment ago, and if you'll hand that to Councilmember Jennings, he'll pass it on down. Okay, that does not relate to this particular item, so if we're ready for discussion, gentlemen, on item 15. Councilmember Williams.
I have a question. It's Mr. Cahill here.
I believe I had asked that earlier, and I didn't get an indication he was. Is that all you had at this time?
Yes, sir, for the moment.
Councilmember Avery.
I make a motion we deny, deny item number 15.
We have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? Councilmember Patino.
Thank you, Mr. Plisca, for that. For a second.
Discussion on the motion to deny. Councilmember Williams.
Yes, I guess with Mr. Plisca not being here tonight, it's going to handicap us a little bit, and I don't know if Greg would know the answer to this or not, if I could call the city engineer out to the-
Greg, if you're, there you are. Thank you.
Greg, are you familiar with this?
I'm familiar with it, but I'll try my best if I can't answer.
You know, if Mr. Cahill, I knew, I'd received some correspondence about this from Mr. Cahill, and he was very interested in it, and I'm concerned as to why he's, he would not be here for this, or if he was notified that it would be a good idea to be here, or with James not being here, I'm probably not asking-
And I can't answer that exactly. I'm not sure if James had called him or not.
With all due respect to my councilmember down there, Avery, and councilmember Mr. Patino, since he's not here, would we have a problem with tabling this until the next meeting and seeing if there was a reason, maybe an illness or something, a reason he couldn't be here? I would like to give him a fair opportunity to go ahead and bring his concerns to us.
Councilmember Avery, Councilmember Williams, you've heard his request, or you wish to- Councilmember Avery, Councilmember Williams, you've heard his request, or you wish to withdraw your motion?
I'm agreeable to that, yes, sir.
Okay, and Councilmember Patino, to withdraw your second?
I'll also be agreeable to that.
Councilmember Hurley, did you have your light on?
Yes, I did. That was to table this.
Okay, I will need a motion at this time to table, to formalize this. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, sir. Seeing he's not here to represent himself, I'd like to table this until the last meeting of this month.
A motion to table? Do I have a second? Councilmember Jennings?
Second.
Discussion on the motion to table. Mr. City Manager, did you have, okay, any discussion on the motion? There being none, if you'll register your vote, and the motion is unanimous to table item number 15. Item number 16.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16 is conduct a public hearing and consider the application of Michael Birchfield for the zoning change request from single-family two residential to the C2 commercial district on tracks 2B and 2C, one mortar burn, ellison survey, A473, containing approximately one and one-half acres of land located on the northwest corner of Denton Highway and Webster Street, locally known as 3501 Denton Highway. The comment that we have from our planning director on this item is that the comprehensive plan already shows this as a commercial area. Approximately 2/3 of the two tracks lie within the commercial portion of the comprehensive land use plan. Therefore, rezoning would be in compliance with the plan. The P&amp;Z met on December the 11th, 2001, and they voted unanimously for approval of this particular item.
Did I see someone else with a yellow card? Ma'am, are you ready to submit that card?
No, I don't, I'm not supposed to do anything.
Okay, you need to select the item and identify the item you wish to...
Looks like the 15 and 20 is the same thing which you was talking about, the storage building.
Okay, go ahead and fill that out, if you would, and put item number 20 on that, and if you'll bring that up, we'll include that in the request to speak. Okay, you've heard the presentation by the city manager regarding the items at issue on item number 16. I will open a public hearing at this time to consider the, this application of Michael Birchfield. I have a number of individuals who have filled out speaker's cards wishing to appear before the council and address this, the first of which is Mr. Bill Harmon. Mr. Harmon, if you will come forward to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, even though we already have it, and you will have five minutes to address the council in regard to this item.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, State Councilman. I'm Bill Harmon, and I've lived in Halton City now 46 years, and I live at 5412 Webster. And I understand that the property up there we're talking about is, they're going to be a warehouse built to take care of the materials and things, which is supposed to be a showplace. And what I'm concerned about is the traffic, trucks coming in and out, and right now I have a hard time backing out of my driveway on the Webster. Traffic's getting, you know, pretty, pretty regular. So now, if he's just going to have an office back there, that's fine, as far as I'm concerned, but if it's a warehouse, I think we're going to run into some problems. And there're going to be trucks in and out, and they're going to have to exit. They're going to enter off of Webster, and they're going to exit back on to Webster when they go back out. So that's my concern right now on that, so...
And you're, if I understand correctly, you have concerns about it being a warehouse put on the back part of that?
Back property, right.
Closest to the, to the residences as well as the added traffic?
Right.
Your concerns are duly noted in that regard? Any questions or comments from the council for this gentleman?
I have one.
Yes?
Mr. Harmon, you said you live at 5412 Webster. That's going to be on the south side of Webster?
Yes.
Okay. Where this property is, and where your property, I assume your property closest to faces this? Are you across the road, or where are you at in, are you across Denton Highway?
No, I'm, I'm about, I'd say a half a block from his property.
Okay.
Revere dead ends into my house.
Revere dead ends into your house? Okay, that's what I need to find out.
Right.
Thanks.
Anything further? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker, who is asked to appear before us tonight, is Mr. Monroe Thomas. Mr. Thomas, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and...
I'm Monroe Thomas. I live at 3501 Revere Street. I live on the corner of Revere, across from Bell there, and of course, I addressed the zoning board when they heard this, and my contention is that going to the zoning that we're going to on this property, what this gentleman has put up there is very nice, but what might be there 10 years from now bothers me, especially on the back part of the property. I don't know what his intentions are for the back part of the property, probably right now, not anything, but later on, some, him or someone else may put something there. This zoning allows some things that, to me, would be very inobjectionable there, and once we change the zoning, then I don't have any say about it after that. And that's my contention. Of course, as was mentioned, part of this property is not in the comprehensive plan. Why do we make a plan and then allow zoning that's not in the plan? Part of this property is not in the comprehensive plan. If the gentleman's going to have an office there, it could be his own office rather than the commercial that he's asking for. So I'm opposed to it. I mentioned it's the zoning board, and I come down here and talk to you, gentlemen. Thank you for listening to me.
Well, we appreciate your comments, and we have duly noted those comments. You're speaking in opposition to this. Members of the council, any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Maurice McCormick. Mr. McCormick?
I'm a little bit short, so I'm going to hold it. I'm Maurice McCormick. I live at 3505 Revere. That's next to Monroe Thomas. And the first thing that I have, would like to say is that when I got the notice on a zoning board, I come down here the night before the zoning, and it's December the 11th, 2002. That's next, this year of December. I have a copy of it right here, that that's when they told me that the zoning board would meet. That's a year later than when they met. That's the first thing I want to, you know, bring up to the agenda. The next thing is that I'm totally opposed to going commercial. If it were rezoned, I would want it to be zoned specific or planned use, not allowing, you know, 7-Eleven or gas stations, fast food restaurants, warehouses, which you'd call lumberyard. And I don't know if this gentleman's going to put a lumberyard there or not, but I understand that he is going to put a warehouse back there, and I'm opposed to that. Auto-tune up, these things could be put on there. I'm like Mr. Thomas. Later on down the line, this could go in, anything could go in. This gentleman has noted, he told me himself, that he would sell it at a premium price. So if McDonald comes in there and wants to buy it, he'd probably sell it. He's a businessman. And I know that if he wants to make a buck, that's the way he'd do it. It's a nice building right now. He has really done well by it. But it's a residential building. It never was built to be a commercial building. All the traffic that goes in and out of there will be on Webster. There's no outlet to Denton Highway. You're trying to zone Denton Highway, 3501, but nothing is ever said about zoning Webster, which is a residential street. And I just, I just totally oppose for it to be that. Also, outlet on 350 Denton Highway is on Webster. This would cause vehicles to back out in a plane of traffic egressing on to Denton Highway. When they come in there, they're going to come in there on, off of Denton Highway, and when they back out, they're going to go right back out it. So they'll be backing out in a plane of traffic. And this would put another thing. You have, nearly all the fire trucks that comes out of there, they go down Webster and get out on Denton Highway. And we've had problems with this before. We've got problems now right across the street with Sonic. We've had many wrecks over there because of Sonic. I know a lot of people don't think so, but it has been known. That's about all I've got to say. I just, I'm concerned with what's going to be on the backside a lot also.
Okay, this council has heard, again, as I assured the other gentlemen, we've listened and we've heard your concerns. I have one question for legal counsel. The fact a typo was made regarding the year, what impact does that have on what we're doing here tonight?
The question is whether or not adequate notice has been given, and I hope, I mean, that's regrettable that the notice did say 2002, but I hope nobody was confused by that and missed an opportunity to speak. I'm glad these, these citizens are here tonight to voice their opposition, but the council can weigh whether or not you think the notice was too confusing for most citizens to know when to appear and speak in favor or in opposition to this request. If you feel like the notice was adequate, then that will meet legal requirements.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. McCormick, I assume your house is the second house off Webster, and the back of your property faces the old...
It, my back of my property, it faces off of Webster. It doesn't face back right up next to you.
I'd roll back through this sector.
I'm on the west side of Webster.
Right.
I mean...
West side?
River, west side of Revere.
And Mr. McCormick, or Mr. Thompson is on the east side?
He's on the west side, next to us on the corner.
Okay. Is there any kind of a buffered area that would suffice y'all in this as far as moving it back so far and making a landscape area between the houses and what they're wanting to do? Or are you just totally against anything, being back behind where they got their building line now, or is there...
Well, I'm totally, you know, putting anything commercial in there, you know, and I, I'm like Mr. Thomas. I think if they're going to zone it at all, zone it whole for office building. That's what he's supposed to be using it for. If he wants to build a warehouse, then he needs to say that he's going to have a warehouse there, and he's going to conduct commercial business. But he's wanting to do office, and then he pitches in warehouse, you know, so that he can, you know, get it smoothed out. And I, I'm totally opposed to commercial, you know. I, I don't think it's, that that building was ever meant to be commercial, and the only way you can do it is to wipe it out, start all over, put another business in there. McDonald would do it in a New York minute, you know.
Any further...
I appreciate that. I'd like, if they could, these citizens that spoke, to stay here in case we need to recall them for a, for maybe compromise or something.
Okay, anything further, Mr. McCormick?
That's all.
Any, from the council, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Our final speaker, who had filled out an appearance card, is Warren Davenport. Warren?
My name is Warren Davenport. I live 3501 Jane Lane, and I'm totally against a commercial building going up there. He's wanting a C2, as I understand. And anything that's listed in C1, you can put in C2. There's 57 different businesses that can go in C1. There's 27 different businesses that can go in C2. And once he gets it rezoned, there's not much we can do about it. So I would just like to know what his plans are. He's already got, understood he already had it zoned for an office building. Is that right? There's been three different, there's been three different rezoning signs up there in the last six months.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pliska not being here tonight puts us at a little bit of a disadvantage. I'm not sure what the past only was of that particular piece of property. I'm sorry.
Well, I think originally it was SF2 because it had an apartment building, two-family dwelling. That's all I've got to say.
Before you leave, Mr. Davenport, Mr. Patino, did you have a question or observation for Mr. Davenport?
Well, Mr. Mayor, no, I've just kind of wanted to, I guess it's the proper time we'd like to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davenport. We're, the public hearing is still open. We're not quite ready for a motion regarding this. There may be other individuals who, who would like to speak. In fact, Mr. Birchfield himself may be here and might want to address the council and answer any questions. Before we do that, yes?
I'm sorry. Looking at some of the backup information on here, I can attest to what Mr. Davenport said. The site is currently zoned, single-family two.
Okay. Councilmember Jennings?
I just wanted to hear from the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Birchfield?
I have one more question.
If you will, you've heard some of the concerns of the citizens and would like for you to address the council at this time regarding, excuse me?
I'd like to clarify one thing before he begins.
Please.
I think someone said that it was single-family, and then someone a while ago said in the land use deal, it was commercial. Is that in the proposed land use, or is that in the present land use?
The existing zoning, shown on the backup documentation, is single-family two. The comprehensive land use plan, as I read earlier, has approximately 2/3 of the two tracks that are being considered here within the commercial portion of the land use plan. As stated by our planning director, the requested rezoning would be in compliance with the plan. That is Mr. Pliska's comments. Greg, do you have anything?
That's correct, and the only reason that I came out here was to highlight the fact that the future land use plan typically took your major corridors, Denton Highway, Bell Nap, 28, and took a number that most developers like to use for commercial properties, and that, that normal depth is 300-foot. So quite honestly, it just took a swath 300-foot down those corridors and said, the future should, indicates that this should be commercial. And it didn't take into account you had a property such as this that had 500-foot of depth. So if you were to follow the strict compliance with the future land use plan, you would have split zoning unless the lot was divided into two lots. That's all I wanted to say.
Does that answer your question? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Birchfield, if you will, give us your name, address for the record, and let us hear from you regarding your request on this property.
Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Michael Birchfield, and presently the owner of 3501 Denton Highway, the new owner of Denton Highway. And just, just quickly, I will just tell you that we've put a tremendous amount of effort. I have a business associate partner, Mr. Whitmire, that's here with me tonight as well. We've been working together for 15-plus years, and this has been a labor of love for us, for us to take something that a business model like ours, which is home improvements, which typically we go into an industrial park and just have an office, and a consumer never sees us, except in advertising or when we go to their home to give them an estimate. And our business plan was, is let's do something different. Let's, let's take a home that's really should be commercial, is part of the zoning design of the future for that property, for it to be commercial. Let's remodel it as a home and let it be an example in the community of what consumers can do to their houses. Instead of just saying that we do good work, have a facility that would be our office, but at the same time be a testimony of the type of work and performance we can perform in the marketplace. I think we've done that. I think we've made a, a very positive statement in this community, and we're really proud to be here. Just to answer some of the questions that were raised at the zoning board meeting, and I thought we addressed that, and I will address it again tonight. Never, ever have I or Mr. Whitmire made any comments that we're building a warehouse. We have no desire to be in our business plan to be in the wholesale distribution business. We have a combination... We have a combination of 52 years in the home improvement industry between myself and Mr. Whitmire. I have no desire to be in a 4% margin roofing wholesale supply business or a siding supply business or a kitchen cabinet supply business. That's not our knowledge, that's not our niche, and that multimillion dollar investment would not be part of our plan. And that's certainly not part of this plan. That property, the improvements that you've seen, some of the things that are missing yet is that an additional vinyl split rail fence will be added to the back part of the property. The back part of the property, which is part of the original property of the homestead, is going to be maintained and mowed and kept. Remind the council and everyone present the status of this property when we purchased it. One of the things that we've taken great pride in over the years is our ability to estimate projects correctly from a cost standpoint and a finish standpoint. Well, we're really goofed on this one. And the part that we goofed on was the removal of debris, drug paraphernalia, and all kinds of unsightly items all over the property. Approximately 400 cubic yards of materials have been removed from that property. Trees, old fencing, refrigerators, freezers, a number of things inside the building that I won't comment on, but it's been, it's been quite a learning process for us. But at the same time, I can tell you that we're exceedingly proud of how it's turned out. And when the community gets a chance to come see this property and come see the inside and how the inside's turned out and see how the refurbishing of the 1941 floors, hardwood floors, turned out to be a beautiful project, I think it'll be something that Halton City can be proud of and hopefully be something that encourages other businesses to do the same type thing along the Denton Highway corridor.
Questions, comments for Mr. Birchfield? Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Birchfield, one question. We mentioned that there is a C1 and a C2 zoning available for this particular property. Is there anything specific to the C2 zoning that, the reason you're requesting that particular zoning as opposed to the C1?
Working with James, he felt the C2 was better describing of the property because it wanted to be a showroom of the project. And I think showroom was specifically in the C2 category because that is the idea. It's not just an office space, but it will be where we advertise for consumers to come see the physical house, come see the work in the house. Because if you come in the house today or when it's finished, what you're going to see is an office in one little remote room in the back, but the rest of it, it will be just like someone's home that had been refurbished. Kitchen, bath, and throughout the house will be products. So it will be a showroom in pure essence, except for a very small space in the back that will be office space.
A couple of points that was brought up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting just for the benefit of the people that didn't happen to be there. A question was raised about traffic coming in and out of that particular site. I believe you stated at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that at any one time you felt like probably the maximum number of cars that would be at that particular facility would be 10 to 12. Would that be correct?
Yeah, right now, we're in the process of pouring a concrete pad. And some of you may have noticed that we removed 80% of it over the weekend because it did not meet specifications that we had set for in the project. So we literally tore out about 75 yards of concrete and half-inch steel rebar because it didn't meet our standards. And it's, we're going to repour in tomorrow morning. So we're really going to have a space for about 12 parking spaces. Obviously, myself and Mr. Whitmire will occupy two of those, but the 10 number is what we've planned on. From a traffic standpoint, I think it had been mentioned that traffic's going to enter from Denton Highway. That's incorrect. The entrance and exit is all from Webster.
All from Webster. Okay. You also mentioned that you do not store your materials there. You actually drop ship the materials to the sites that this is, that you're working with. If at some time you did have occasion to have something brought in, would you have adequate area to take a truck and turn it around? Do you have any, any plans for, for making an area to offload something if you had to do that?
The type trucks that we would receive is very similar to a package that we received today. Our vinyl fence project came in partial shipped. And that vinyl fence project that we would normally ship to a customer's home came to our property. And there were some cap tops or fence post caps that did not come in. They come in UPS. So there will be allowable space for like a UPS truck to come in and make a delivery for us.
But you do not foresee 40-foot tractor trailers coming in and out of that piece of property?
We don't have a dockside facility. We don't have people to unload those type trucks, and that is not our business plan, has never been and will not be in the future.
Very good. You mentioned one other thing at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that you had planned to have someone living there on site. You mentioned possibly a, excuse me, Halton City Police Officer in the apartment above the garage area there. And I assume that that person would also be charged with maintaining the grounds as far as the mowing and the area immediately west of the final building there?
That's correct. The garage apartment that was in really horrible shape has been completely renovated and it's just absolutely a really nice piece of property right now and a nice facility. And our plans is, and there has been someone that we have spoke to and made a commitment to, once we had approval, that a Halton City single police officer would be living in that facility and for that services for us, he will be providing security and also property maintenance. So our plan is, is not only to invest in the property, but also to keep it constantly maintained and prevent from what happened in the past.
That answers my question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
First, I'd like to compliment you on your property you got there. I've been there since '54 and I've seen that house since '54. And I've seen it in various different conditions. At one time, it was a showplace. And then I think when the carpenters passed away, the property deteriorated. And what y'all done to it is just a milestone for Halton City. I mean, it's, I don't know how many people I've had comment on it, what's going on there, what are they doing to that? And I also have concerns about the people that live over on Revere and Webster that's been there for 30, 40 years. It's a residential area. And if someone on my street wanted to take their house and do what y'all done with it, I would want them to do it. Now, as far as the concerns like Mr. McCormick and Mr. Thompson said, Mr. Harmon, I think they're concerned about the home type atmosphere that they have on Revere and Webster Street. And like Mr. Jennings says, when someone says they're going to bring trucks in, anytime the word trucks brought up, y'all might actually think of a semi truck. You don't, you don't think of UPS, Bob Teller, or something like that. My question is, I know where the house is, I know where the apartment is, and back behind there, there used to be the old Harps Barn. Is that, what is that going to be now?
Well, in the middle of the field area, I call, is, we've refurbished that just recently, and that's strictly just storage for lawn mowers and lawn maintenance materials.
What are the plans for that property, all the way back to the property that backs up on Revere and the property on over toward Montreal Circle?
We'll put up about 300 feet of vinyl, two-rail, three-rail, and four-rail vinyl fencing. That's another product line that we represent and install in the community at this time. I mean, there is no plan to do anything else back there. We're just going to maintain that property and take care of it.
And the surfaces you're going to have back there on that property?
Just grass.
It's just going to be maintained grass?
That's correct.
Do you foresee somewhere the word storage building has just came up?
I think the word come out warehouse, and that's not coming from myself and Mr. Whitmire. I keep saying, and it's absolutely committed, we're not in the warehouse distribution business, and we have no intention of doing that.
So actually, y'all plan on using the storage building forward?
Correct.
And I think that's where the houses on Webster start facing in toward your property back down there.
Members of the council, any further questions for Mr. Birchfield? Okay. Since this is still a public hearing, Mr. Davenport, I think I saw you wave something a moment ago. Did you have a question for Mr. Birchfield? If you do, would you please come back to, to the podium, please, and ask that question?
He stated that James said that it's going to be a showroom and it has to go under C2. And also on that same line, it says showroom and warehouses. So that there's where, picked up right there is, as soon as you take and put a C2 on this, he can put anything he wants to go back there. And I said, well, there's 27 items listed here, or businesses, that he can put in there. And there's 57 items in C1 that he can put in there. Anything from a bakery to bicycle shop, barber shop, repair shop. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Jennings, I would believe you have a further comment?
Well, maybe a point of clarification here, I don't know, since Mr. Plisca's not here and we can't ask him. Has he approached you about the possibility of doing a plan development on that particular piece of property?
I'm not sure that I understand the question.
Okay. Under a, under a PD, the zoning would, would go with the development that is actually on there. In other words, your particular development. And you would sit down and you would determine exactly what you want on that property and how you'd like it to sit. And then it would be zoned as a plan development. If you sold that property in the future and somebody came in and needed to, you know, let's say McDonald's, wanted to put a McDonald's there, they would have to come in and rezone the property because it was zoned originally as a plan development for your development. Would you have any opposition to possibly looking at doing a PD as opposed to just straight C1 or C2 zoning?
I would consider anything. I mean, I need to know fully what that means.
Well, I think that would give the citizens that, you know, live in that area some, some protection. And I think it would, I think they would feel a lot better about it if we did a PD. And if you, in reality, have no future aspirations of doing anything, you know, as far as like warehouse or anything like that, it shouldn't affect your, your project in any way whatsoever other than the fact that possibly, you know, it would, it would string this out another couple of weeks or so. If you would be receptive to that, I certainly would like to proceed with, with asking James about that and see if that is something that we could do.
Okay. We still have a public hearing underway, and we'll need to close that public hearing after we've given everyone an opportunity to address that. And then at that time, Councilmember Jennings, if you want to make that proposal in the form of a motion, we can, we can address it at that time. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Birchfield?
I have one other question. If, if we did in fact proceed along the lines of a PD, would that cause you any distress as far as the business is what you're doing now? That, that really wouldn't stop?
It didn't restrict me from what our business plan?
No, it wouldn't stop you from what you're building at this point.
I can't see that, no.
Now, I, I think that that would, that would show really good faith on your part to be willing to entertain that. And I really think that the citizens around that area would, would feel much more comfortable with a PD. And I'm surprised that James hadn't brought that up. I don't know, maybe he was looking at the land use plan or whatever. He's not here, so we can't ask him, but I would like to, I'd like to check with him and see if that's something we might be able to do.
I think probably, no one will speak for James, but I think James was very comfortable with, with what our business plan was.
Right.
And I think it's very, personally, I think it's very friendly to the neighbors. I think it's very friendly to this community. In fact, there's many, many neighbors that are not here tonight that are elderly, that are very, very supportive of what we're doing. And, you know, our, our plan is certainly to be a viable business in this community and also be good stewards in the community. And everyone that is in this community that has a concern or a question about our business or how we're going to conduct our business, we have an open door policy. We have a number, in fact, an enormous number of people that have stopped by and been incredibly supportive of what we're doing in this community.
Well, I don't think there's anyone that's seen the property that, you know, would, would like to have it back the way it was. Mr. Mayor, if I might, could I just have a show of hands of the people that have spoken up here against this? Would, would each of you be receptive to a plan development in that area?
They would be.
Okay.
They're just sitting there going for a PD.
Okay. Well, yeah. Okay. That answers my question.
Counsel, yes, Mr. Alfred?
If I may, related to Councilmember Jennings' point about a plan development, I realize too, Mr. Plisca is not here. I did speak briefly. I stepped off the dais to talk to the city engineer. He, he did have a comment that on a long-range point of view with, with plan development there, it might cause difficulties in reselling the property or having it for any other. Of course, that's one of your concerns of doing a PD, but it could tie their hands in the future if they wanted to sell the property.
That would be up to Mr. Birchfield to decide if that'd be something that, you know, that he could, could live with. I, I can't see someone coming in there and spending that kind of money speculating on trying to sell that property. I think you've got a lot of time and effort there, and I think you've got a great location. And I, I think that you'll be an asset to the business community here. But if, if you were to have aspirations of selling that property anytime in the future, then a PD would restrict you in some way.
So does a PD deny that being commercial to the next purchaser?
No, he would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, go through the same thing, the same thing that you did, and have to bring it before the city council just like you did. But no, it would not totally restrict it from ever being rezoned again.
Okay. You have to go through the same process?
Correct. Correct.
Anything further, Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Williams?
One clarification, and possibly Councilmember Jennings knows this since he works with the P&amp;Z. On this plan development, Mr. Birchfield decided to sell this property to the next investor. It's going to take and do the same thing, do it for a display. There would be no, they could go and go with that as long as they did not change the use of the property.
An identical business could go in there and, and use it exactly like it sits right now, right?
When you say identical business, real estate office?
Right, real estate office. As long as you didn't change the foot, the footprint of the, of the buildings.
Right.
You didn't add buildings, you didn't come in and put a strip of warehouses or whatever there, as long as you remain within that original footprint and all the changes were inside of the walls of the building, then yes, that, that could be done.
And on that, and on that plan development, it would specify what that back portion of the property would be?
Correct. Correct. Correct.
Okay. Anything further, Councilmember Williams?
That's all. I'm ready for a motion.
We have, for your information, those of you in the audience and those watching on TV, we've referred several times tonight to the fact that Mr. Plisca is not here. And I probably should have mentioned that earlier. He had some minor surgery earlier today, and he has other things on his mind tonight other than being here. So that's put us at a little disadvantage and we've had to do a little scrambling, but we appreciate your patience and yours too, Mr. Birchfield, with, with that information. Anyone else in the audience wish to, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak for or against this request for zoning change? Okay, there being none, I close the public hearing, and we move now to the corresponding motion. Councilmember Jennings?
Mr. Mayor, based, based on the discussion that we've had here, I would move that we table this item to our next regularly scheduled council agenda and instruct staff to get in touch with Mr. Birchfield at their very earliest possible convenience and discuss the possibilities of a PD and report back to the council so that we'll be able to determine if we should in fact act on this at our next meeting.
We have a motion to table. I have a second. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is for a second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, if you will, register your votes, gentlemen. And that carries by unanimous vote. We're going to address item 17, and then we're going to take a break, take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and take up with item number 18. Mr. Alfred?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 17 is for public hearing and to consider the application of Steve Kennedy for the zoning change request from the SF2 Single Family Residential District to the M1 Industrial District on lots 8, 9, and 10, Block 25, Watauga Addition, containing approximately .4820 acres of land located at the northwest corner of Huddleston and Flippo Street, locally known as 5409 Flippo. I will point out that the applicant is requesting this zoning change in order to develop an office warehouse facility for an electrical contracting business and to lease out the remaining warehouse space. The site is designated as commercial according to the city's comprehensive land use plan. A commercial designation will allow for this type of use on the property. Therefore, the requested rezoning would be in compliance with the, with the plan. Our P&amp;Z commission at their December 10th, excuse me, December 11th, 2001 meeting voted unanimously to approve this item.
Okay. You've heard the city manager's explanation of the issues that are before us. I open a public hearing at this time regarding Mr. Kennedy's request for this zoning change. And Mr. Kennedy, are you here? Are you designee? If you would, come forward and anything you'd like to say to the council, and we may have a question or two for you. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Steve Kennedy. I own the property at 5409 Flippo.
Will you pull the mic up a little bit closer? Thank you.
My name's Steve Kennedy. I own the property at 5409 Flippo Street. We're still in the planning stages of this project. We're hoping to build a 7,200 square foot metal building on the property. And I met with city engineers and... And I met with city engineers and a few other people the other day, and just look forward to working with the city and doing what y'all need done.
Okay, members of the council, any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Councilmember Williams?
What are these warehouses going to be used for?
Small business like myself, electrical contractors, plumbing contractors.
You going to make a strip type?
Yeah, it'd just be four leases, four small offices with warehouses in the back.
Be a roll-up door in the front or the roll-up door in the back?
It'd be in the back. The roll-up door and the walk-through door will be in the back with a small storefront in each lease in the front.
Thank you.
Any further questions by the council? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Members of the audience, anyone wishing to speak either for or against the request by Mr. Kennedy? There being none, I close the public hearing, and we move to the corresponding motion. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, will you approve ordinance number 02002-002-15?
Okay, a motion to approve, a second, Councilmember Jennings.
For a second.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, gentlemen, register your votes. And that carries by unanimous vote. The time is 15 till 9:00. We will take a five-minute break, and we'll be back in here at 10 minutes till 9:00.
Come on down, your next contestant.
You fixed to be there. Watch that, where it fits.
There is jealous.
I had to go sign autographs.
Okay, we're ready to go back into session after taking a brief respite, item number 17, in the public hearings. Mr. Alfred?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
We just finished seventeen, correct.
You're just testing us.
Number eighteen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eighteen is to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of David Fisher for a conditional use permit to operate an auto sales facility on property located M2 Heavy Industrial District on tracks 10G1 JV York Survey, A-Dash 1754, containing approximately .3030 acres of land located on the northwest corner of northeast 28th Street and Ola Lane, locally known as 3,800 northeast 28th Street. The site is currently zoned M2. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit primarily because our zoning requirements mandate it must be done as it fronts on a state highway. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item at its December the 11th, 2001 meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this item.
After hearing the explanation by the city manager, we move now to open the public hearing on this application by David Fisher. Mr. Fisher, you have the first right to address the council. Are you present? Would you like to do so at this time? Or just be available to answer questions? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this zoning request? Anyone wishing to speak against? There being none, I close the public hearing, and we move now to the corresponding ordinance. Gentlemen, Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2002-003-15.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's for a second.
Councilmember Avery?
Mine was for a second, Mayor.
Okay, discussion on the motion? There being none, if you'll register your vote, I will display it. And that is unanimous vote. Item number nineteen, Mr. Alfred?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number nineteen is to conduct a public hearing and to consider the application of Sue McGlaughlin on behalf of Jim Garrison Plumbing Company Incorporated for a conditional use permit to operate an auto sales facility on property zoned M2 Heavy Industrial District on track 4B1 South Sawyer Survey, A-Dash 1424, located on the west side of Denton Highway, containing approximately 31,100 square feet of land locally known as 5901 Denton Highway. This item is very similar to the one previous. Conditional use permit is required because it is located fronting on a state highway. And also, on December 11th, our P&amp;Z Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this item.
I will open the public hearing at this time. Ms. McGlaughlin, are you here?
She's here.
Okay, you're here on behalf of her. Would you like to address the council at this time, or would you like to just be available for questions if we have?
Just be available.
Members of the council, any questions for the gentleman? There being none, thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on behalf of this request for zoning change? Anyone wishing to speak against? The public hearing is closed, and we move now to the corresponding motion. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve 02002-00415.
Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Councilmember Williams?
Got a question. This property is up in the 5900 block of Denton Highway. Were there any people opposed to this when this came up, or do you know?
I don't have any listings on that, people being opposed. Councilmember Parson, the engineer is listening. He was updated on that information this morning by our Planning and Zoning Department.
This is item nineteen?
Yes.
All right. Linda updated me, 11 properties were notified, and we didn't receive any opposed or in favor.
Thank you.
Further questions? Discussion on the motion? Register your votes, gentlemen. And the vote is unanimous. Item number 20.
Mayor, item number 20 is for consideration and action on an ordinance amending ordinance number 097-015-15 as amended, the zoning ordinance of the city of Holton City, Texas, codified as Appendix B to the Holton City Code 1998, as amended by amending regulations for the height of temporary and portable-type accessory buildings in the residential districts as specified in Section 31(c)(1). I'll advise the council that at the last regular council meeting, a moratorium was established on all portable temporary buildings of this type, basically storage buildings. However, at that time, our planning director pointed out to us that that moratorium would not impact those buildings that do not require a permit in the first place, i.e., they are less than, less than 120 feet. What this is doing is extending that to those items that do not require the permit in the first place by lowering the height, the maximum height, from 16 to 12 feet.
Okay, you have heard the explanation that the city manager has given to this. I open now the public hearing regarding this issue. We have two speakers' requests. One is Teresa Smith. Teresa, did you address this a moment ago? And it was on this issue. We got, I got the cart before the horse on item number 12. Do you wish to address the council further? Please come forward and address the council.
The building is now in assisting. It is up. They built the building. I was not notified a minute, I was not told by anybody when I purchased this that I needed a permit. When I talked to Wes today in the building in zone, he told me that he did approve the building before y'all froze that the story's high. But now that that ordinance is, or that is frozen, he cannot give me a permit. They've left the building standing, the walls are up, the outer side is already ready, caiced in, the decking is not on, the sheetrock, I mean, the shingles isn't up. My neighbor loves it because she's right up above my land, just enough that her back, her bedroom, master bedroom overlooks my backyard. So she loved the idea that she, I was blocking her bedroom window and it gave her more privacy than what I have, you know? It gave us both privacy is what it's done because it's not seen from the road, it's back in the backyard.
And what are you asking of this council?
Well, I'm asking to keep it because basically what southerns and the contractors failed to do was to get a permit or let me know that there was this pending like this. And they're saying that $2,500 belongs to me now, and that if this does not pass or whatever, then I'm going to have to tear it down completely and build it 12 feet. I have a 10, I bought a 10 by 16 by 16 tall building.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yeah, I'd like to try another shot at some constructive zoning here. I believe that there is some latitude here where she could go before the zoning board of adjustments in that the city had pre-approved this building, and due to circumstances beyond her control, she had surgery, and she was unable at the time to be notified of the changes in the ordinance. I think that having her pull this particular building that is already in construction down would be a hardship on her. I don't think that we can, I don't think we can grandfather that building that wasn't under construction, but I do think that she could get a variance from the ZBA under a hardship. Here again, we'd have to ask someone that has a little more expertise than I. Here's someone that does right here, Wes.
I need to correct your information. I'm Wes.
Hi, yes.
We've never talked before today, ever. Code enforcement officer caught you building a building today-
That's true.
-and stopped you to get this resolved. No building has been approved.
You were not the man that I talked to in the summer. When I came in and gave a handwritten, he's right, I thought I was talking to the same man. This guy was really tall, and I, I thought he-
Sounds like James.
Huh?
That sounds like James.
They don't issue permits, and our records don't indicate that no permit has ever been issued at your address.
No, I didn't state that there was a permit. There was not a permit. And, excuse me, because you're not the man that I talked to this summer. He's real tall and real big.
I understood you to say Wes, and I just wanted to correct that information.
Right, because I talked with him today over the matter.
Before you take off, could you clarify that? Is it possible to go before the ZBA and seek a variance against that particular ordinance in that particular instance?
To my understanding, they can. Wayne could answer that question, but yes, you could get a variance to that. Is that correct?
I need a little more information about this particular building, but we've got two issues here, Councilmember Jennings. One is, we've got a moratorium that the council has adopted that prohibits the city from issuing any permits. And quite frankly, I would not want the Board of Adjustment to grant any variances that might contradict that moratorium. So I think the first question in my mind is, is this building, let me ask it another way, would this building be in compliance with your zoning regulations if it weren't for the moratorium? Because if the answer to that is yes, it would be acceptable and in compliance except for the moratorium, then the quickest avenue for her to get permission would be to seek a variance from the moratorium, just like the gentleman did on item number 15 tonight. And she would need to file a written application with the city secretary, get on your next council agenda, have this council grant a variance from that provision if she can show you that it's reasonable and would adversely affect-
I was under the interpretation the building was already constructed. Is it in construction, or is it actually up?
Oh, it's up.
It is up.
I mean, when I say it's up, the walls, the outer walls are caiced in, the rafters are up. The only thing that's going to keep it from getting destroyed from rain would put the decking and the shingles up.
And the issue's going to be, is that building, as already constructed, in compliance with your current zoning ordinance?
Yes.
If it is, then-
It's 10 by 16 by 16, and they told me that it was in compliance with the current.
The way it's written today saved the moratorium, yes.
Then she could have gotten a building permit to do this if the moratorium was not in effect. She didn't get a building permit.
That's what they informed me this morning.
Okay.
So, again, even though the building's already been erected, if the council finds that it's appropriate to grant a variance from the moratorium, then it sounds like she can get the appropriate permits from city staff by making application and doing whatever they require in that regard, even though the building's already been constructed. But again, that's the council's decision whether or not-
As it sits right now.
-you want to grant a variance to your moratorium or wait and see how the ordinance turns out before you do it.
She would grandfather on that.
Councilmember Hurley, you had your light on a couple of times.
Well, I was going to say something about going before the zoning board of adjustments for a variance on that, but I think y'all arrived at the same, it's right. I think what the attorney's talking about would be the best way.
Councilmember Williams?
I think probably I'd like to have someone's staff take her, go ahead and take her back and let them show exactly what she's going to have to do, and then she can go through the process because she probably doesn't want to go in the long run out here, and we're not going to be able to do it right here. But they'll show you the way that you can get on the council agenda and bring it back before us like the other gentleman did.
I do have a question. What do I do between now and then as far as preserving what is there to keep it from weathering, from rain, you know, because, I mean, it's an open roof. What do I do between now and then?
Let me ask the city manager to address that. How can her issue be addressed administratively to proceed from this point to evaluate and determine a plan of action? And then, Councilmember Jennings?
Temporary measure, I do respect the fact that you've got a considerable investment here, and it's stopped partway, and you're concerned about the existing materials that are up being damaged because you don't have a roof on it, or do you have a roof and just no shingles?
No, I have the actual trussels and that's it, the rafters.
The rafters.
Yes, but the wall, and the outer walls of it is already ready, constructed.
Our staff, of course, will be willing to work with you and assist with you in bringing this item to the ZBA as the council has suggested. In the meantime, though, considering the size of the structure, I think it'd be very feasible to put a heavy plastic tarp over it temporarily, fasten it down with staples or nails even. But I don't think you would lose anything on your investment if you protected it in that manner, and I think that would be a minimal cost in order to do that.
There's one other deal of this, is I got an open pool area. So right now, because the pool is on the other side of this storage building, so right now I've put construction fencing up to keep from any little kids just bearing up to walk and fall in the covered pool area. Do I have to go in and put the proper fencing up if I'm?
Additional fencing to?
I took the fencing down.
Around the pool?
Where the building is.
Are these administrative issues that can be addressed between this lady and the staff tomorrow or later this evening or something?
Mr. Cotton game would get her information and arrange to meet with her tomorrow. We'll do everything we can to try and assist you in this difficult situation.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Jennings and then Councilmember Hurley.
My only question would be, we are currently in an agenda item that would actually change the zoning, due to the fact that she's come here before we've changed the zoning, and she has stated her desire to seek a variance at our next council meeting. Would she, in effect, be grandfathered if we changed this zoning on this item?
She's got a 16-foot building, you're proposing to adopt a 12-foot height limitation. She's not grandfathered, she doesn't have any pre-existing status. However, it's up to the council whether or not you think it's appropriate to grant her a variance from the moratorium, in spite of what you're proposing to do here. And you can do that. And if you allow her to proceed with construction prior to second reading of your ordinance, then she would be a non-conforming use with a 16-foot building.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, it does.
Councilmember Hurley, I believe you had your light on.
Wes, has she ever had a permit at all?
Our records don't indicate that no permit has ever been issued there for storage shed, and I talked to all my staff, and they do not recall ever visiting with her. Possibly she got the general information from James Pliska prior to the moratorium.
This was discovered the code compliance?
Yes, it was a code enforcement officer. I don't know if it was a citizen's complaint or if it was an inspector initiated, but she had shut them down or just told them they had to stop construction. To my understanding, it's under- To my understanding, it's under construction.
So what we have at issue here is a motion or an item on the agenda to amend the zoning ordinance to take storage buildings from a maximum height of 16 to 12. That's what we're discussing. This lady has appeared before us with a special problem that has some dynamics that have got to be worked out by staff. Is that correct? Is that...
That is correct.
Is that an assessment? Can we proceed with her issues on that basis and move forward with deciding, do we want to reduce the height of accessory buildings from 16 to 12?
I believe what I've heard said here tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, but she can go through for special variance through the ZBA at a later date here.
What I recommend is that she apply for a variance to the moratorium, not to the Board of Adjustment. She could go for a variance later on down the road after you adopt this ordinance, but what I'm looking at is having her make the same application as the applicant did in item number 15, have staff send out notices, see if there's opposition and the council can evaluate whether or not to grant her a variance from the moratorium because as I understand it, her building would be acceptable under your current zoning regulations. It will not be acceptable under the new proposed regulations and that's a council decision whether you want to grandfather her by giving her a variance from the moratorium because of her special circumstances where she actually initiated the construction of the building prior to adoption of this ordinance.
But her specific case is not, does not fall under the framework of this agenda item and we're spending a lot of time discussing something that is not on the agenda.
I think there was legitimate confusion about that issue on her part, but it's not posted to grant a variance.
How we proceed from here.
So all you can do tonight is give her direction on how she needs to proceed and you can't take action on her case tonight. What you need to be considering now is whether to approve a 12-foot height limitation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Councilmember Williams?
While we've got the counselor up and talking, I've got another question. We brought up zoning board of adjustments. When we changed this from 12 or 16-foot to 12-foot, say, Mr. Patino wants to build a building and he's going to do one, but he wants to go higher than 12-foot and our ordinance shows that 12-foot is the maximum. Can Mr. Patino come to the zoning board of adjustment and ask for a variance to be able to build that at a higher?
Yes, he can. The Board of Adjustment would have the authority to grant a variance. It's a very difficult standard. You have to show unnecessary hardship and there are a number of conditions you have to meet, but yes, the Board of Adjustment has the authority to grant a variance in appropriate cases.
I was thinking they would. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jennings.
Mr. Mayor, when you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to move.
No, sir. We have a public hearing that we still have one individual who has filled out a card and that is Sandra Hardy. Ms. Hardy? You have been delegated the responsibility. We've got, if you will, Mr. Hardy, give us your name and address for the record.
Charlie Hardy, 4905 Fossil. And you say it's okay to put up a building 10 by 12, no more than 12-foot. Is that right? So you're not restricting just square footage or height, you're restricting square footage also. We want to put one up, but it's 12 by 16, but no more than 12-foot high. And what do I have to do to get that done?
Mr. Elfrinck, would you like to answer that question?
In that case, the moratorium would still stand and the permit would not be issued until the moratorium's been resolved because it exceeds 120 square feet and it requires a permit.
Right. So I couldn't get a permit?
Not without a variance and coming forward to this body as Wes mentioned earlier.
Well, that's why I say, what I have to do, I mean, so I don't want to build it over 12-foot high, I just want it a little bit bigger than 8 by 10.
If you will contact Mr. Cottongame, who was out here just a moment ago, he can follow you through the same procedure that the lady who spoke a moment ago.
Will he be up here tomorrow?
Yes, sir, he will.
Cottongame?
Cottongame, yes, sir.
I'll see him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any one else in the audience wish to speak on this proposed ordinance or this amendment to the ordinance? We'll close the public hearing at this time and Councilmember Jennings, we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve 02002-00515.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If you will, register your vote and the display shows unanimous. Item number 21, Mr. Elfrinck, the final of our public hearings tonight.
Final item tonight, Mr. Mayor, is to consider an application or appeal, Aldes, for a zoning change request from the C3 commercial district to the C5 commercial district to open an auto sales facility on tracks 2A and 2A1, West North Survey, A-1166, containing approximately one acre of land located on the north side of East Belknap Street, locally known as 5821 East Belknap. There is an existing or has been in the past, an auto sales facility at this site. The applicant's site plan has shown the proper parking spaces as well as 50 square feet of landscaped open space. A primary item here that our planning director asked me to point out to the governing body is that the applicant must discontinue the auto body shop that is currently on this site and the applicant has been so advised. I do believe the applicant is here tonight. The P&amp;Z Commission met on January the 8th, 2002 and voted unanimously to approve this item.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time and Mr. Aldes, if you would like to come forward at this time, if you would like to address the council. Would you please come to the podium, please?
Yeah.
And give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Waleed Ali and good evening, everybody. I'm representing Mrs. Aldes Arpia, which is my sister-in-law. I hear this has been approved in regard to the body shop. I've been coordinated with Mr. James and he said if I have to do that, the property has to be divided and you have to do SLAB, which is a term of doing that. I have no problem with that because I assure Mr. James that I'm, actually, I've been doing everything the city been asking me to do in regard to cleaning, putting a fence, even the fence I bought right now is a wood fence, which is our plan to put a brick fence around that body shop and open the door from the back. But Mr. James said I do have to have, to have the property divided, even if the, right now the property is divided to two pieces and I'm paying the taxes 98 as two businesses, but he said it's been divided wrong and it has to be re-divided actually linked to it all, which is not, not in a way it's been. I'm going to do that if you, if the council need assurance of doing this, so I will do that. You know, I don't have, I have a lot of speech to say. I address, I address the mayor, I address the letter for you. If you look at it, explain all my situation. I'm from San Diego, California. We had our business since 87, me and my brother, which is, we saved their money and we invested all in 5821 East Belknap and we want to move over here. Actually, myself, I moved back in September of 98, I moved my family over here and I obtained my business license of August 99 as a used car dealer. So, but the only, as I spoke to you, I'm a multimillionaire. It needs later money, it needs about $50,000 for improvement for the property and it's about $150,000 just to get inventory over there. So I found little difficulty of doing so, so at least the property temporarily to get the money to start doing what I'm doing right now. And it's going to take me about six, seven months from now to do so. But, and the body shop right now is operating, but not for the public, it's operating for a private. So even if I want to keep the body shop, I'm not going to do a body shop for the public because I don't do that. I've been in business 87 and I do car lot, I'm in car sale and this is why I know what to do, you know? I'm not going to change it and I want to stay doing it if I can.
Okay, hang on just a moment. I think we may have some questions for you. Councilmember Henderson?
What do you mean you do bodywork for private?
Sometimes we used to bring cars, you know, little damage and we fixed them. Actually, I purchased, I did half of the property because it used to be a body shop and I canceled all that and I bought a mechanic because every car, used car sellers, you know, it has to have a garage for it. So I did, I did fix my car when I bring them because I buy cars for, from the time I got over here, my business still in California running to supply this business. So when I buy cars, I fix them up and I send them back there. But in the future, I want to keep that garage for the, for the car dealer itself, it's not going to be for the public. And if it's going to be for the public, I want to do like Mr. James recommended to me, just go and do the SLAB, which is, I don't know, I don't know exactly how to do that yet.
Anything further?
That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, sir. This property is C3 right now, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're applying for a C5?
Yes, sir.
Okay, C5 doesn't allow any sort of paint and body shop whatsoever and I think if I could help probably clarify what you were saying while ago, this property is two tracks of land parallel with each other.
This is the way they divide.
Right in between Belknap and I guess that's East Beaulieu Street. And did Mr. Pliska tell you that you would have to replant this the other way with the plant? Is that what you plan on doing before you get to C5 zoning on this front?
What I want, I just need my car lot and my garage. I'm not, I'm not planning to do bodywork because I don't, I tried before, I'll be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not good at it.
Well, you've lost me because you said you were going to do bodywork.
I was doing the little, when I buy cars, if there is anything that needs to be bodywork because the building itself is equipped with $45,000 boot. All the compliance, I've been doing it with the fire, with the environment. I already got all the license for it because it's there in the building when I bought it. So when I, when I bring cars, belonged to me, I was fixing it there, but I'm not intended to do, to go in the body business to do wrecking cars or bodywork.
Does this property have a certificate of occupancy on it right now?
See, that's, that's the issue. When I obtained my license back in 99, they issued it to me, nobody told me because the street, Halton City, was C3 completely and I'm one of them. At the end of, it was back in October of 2000, which is the end of the year 2000, as I understand from Mr. James, that they sent all those car dealers that they have to rezon. They exclude me, I didn't receive the letter. I just received it recently and the reason he told me, he thought I'm in the mechanic shop, I'm body business.
Mr. Mayor, could I call the fire chief out here a moment, please?
Yes, please.
Jerry McIntyre, if you're back there, could you come forward, please? Y'all are wondering how we did that, we have a TV in the back.
And I apologize because I was listening to another conversation.
That's quite all because I'm going to, this particular property here that Mr. Aldes has, you familiar with the property up on Belknap Street, 5811? I think he said it was the under, 5821?
I'm not.
We're trying to decide if there is a CO on the property at this time and I don't know if you or Mr. Cottongame would have that information or...
We could explore that. I'm not sure how quick we could come up with it.
Because Mr. Aldes says that he didn't have a CO on it and that's when he ran into the problem in 1999 that...
The issue popped back about two months ago and they told us that we have to rezon and everybody was prepared, taking that up, calling back in October.
Could you step to the microphone, please, when you...
Mr. James told me that everybody's, everybody received letters of rezoning from C3 to C5 back in October of 2000. I did not receive a letter from the city for the rezoning, which is not an issue right now.
And you own this property?
Yes, sir.
And when did you buy it?
The reason, the name, the name is under my sister-in-law just because of, the reason we bought it under her name because she qualified for the property, but it's, it's the family, yeah.
When was the property purchased?
September, September of 98.
And you don't know if y'all got a CO when you went into business?
C3 was.
No, the certificate of occupancy is where you come to the city hall and pay for a permit and have it come out and do it.
This is, this is my mistake because back in California, when I obtained a dealer license, the, which is Sacramento over there, they, they won't accept my application unless if I have certificate of occupancy. When I apply over here because of the street C3, they issue, issue for me the dealer license, which is I didn't see any problem. If my dealer license been issued, then the property has no problem. This is my understanding.
Well, that's good thinking and probably logical thinking, but the state of Texas, you can get a dealer's license and your property that you own might not be in compliance with the city codes.
I'm learning and I'm paying for that, so, yeah.
Right. And I just, I'd like to know if there is a CO. I don't know if we can find that out tonight or...
I can research records.
Wouldn't, on the CLs, wouldn't they find that out when they do the fire, annual fire inspections?
Right.
That's one of the things they look for on annual inspections is a current copy of a certificate of occupancy, but like I say, that's quite a database that we're going to have to try to get through. I'm not sure I can find it tonight, but I'll give it a shot.
Gentlemen, just a thought, it sounds like there are a lot of issues here that are unresolved, that we're not going to be able to resolve tonight. Is there wisdom, members of the council, in tabling this to the, to the next meeting and ironing out a number of these issues and we can come forward with a clean presentation that we've got a lot of answers to? That's just a, just a proposal. Councilmember Williams, you have the floor and Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Avery.
I want to be fair to Mr. Aldes and since he has this on the, on the agenda and since there is a problem in knowing whether the CO is there, you know, we want to do this right this time, we don't want to do it and then find that we did it wrong and make sure, and we're at a little handicap because Mr. James isn't here tonight and, but he'll be back probably tomorrow. What I would like to do is table this and put it on the next agenda, which will be the last Monday night of this month and that way we would have all our facts together and James could go with us over this and describe to us the difference in the replating or... You're not going to be, I know you've got an awful expensive paint booth in there, I think that's what you refer to it as.
This is why I want to say, as I understand, it's been approved for, to change to the C5 for a car, for a used car lot, but you don't want the body shop. I don't want the body shop. I will discontinue the body shop, but because I just took a flight, I took three times fly from San Diego back over here when I received the letter from the city and back again when was the meeting and I missed it, it should be in December and I just got here Sunday night for this meeting.
But you come in every week, don't you?
No, I, I come every...
I thought I saw you at the auction every week.
I come every, every month, month, yes, month, yeah. So yesterday I came and today, today I was here.
Anything further? Councilmember Williams?
No, just, is this going to be a hardship on you to be here the last Monday? If it is, we may need to move it to the first.
It's been, it's been hard and my kids, actually, you know, I don't want to put it an issue for you right now to handle, but if I, if, I came because of this meeting, I bought my, my time until the 22nd, I supposed to leave here. It's going to be very hard for me to come back, but I'll be back for any reason you want me. If it's a must, I will be back. I have no problem.
I think, I think in the best interest of everybody, it would be best to do that because this is, this is a little different from what we've been doing.
Okay, you want to discuss the issue of the body shop?
The CO is one of the issues they want to discuss.
What, I'm sorry, what's the CO?
Certificate of occupancy.
The certificate of occupancy, I've never been informed of it and, but I lost you there.
That's, that's the reason we need to go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and probably table and get that. This is the building, the fire chief here and they do inspections on it and they will have a record of some kind, I hope, certificate of occupancy on that property.
They came in and they gave me a certificate, the fire department, yes, they came in, I have that.
Is this the man with the magical knowledge? Is this the man with the magical knowledge?
I was just going to add that we will have records.
Okay.
That will show. I believe the question with his is, you, since the ordinance changed, you can no longer do a body shop and cars on the same piece of property, which is what he is or was doing.
I'm fine with it.
Because I was with James Pliska when he came to see you, when you were selling cars and doing the body shop.
Yes, that's what he told me and, and he asked me to remove the car and I, I was, I comply with every, every thing the city told me, I'd make them move the car. Every time the city comes and asks me to do something, I'm there, I'm doing it.
I make a motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay, we have two people who had requested to, uh, have their lights on and then we'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Jennings?
I just wanted to know if the body shop is functional at this time? Are, are cars being worked on in the body shop?
Yes, right now, yes, but privately, it's not.
All I need to know, thank you.
Councilmember Avery?
May I make a motion to table, Mayor?
Okay, uh, John, I think, Councilmember Williams, you ready to make a motion and, uh, in that regard?
Yes, sir, I think until we can see Mr. Pliska and, and get all the details on this and have, give the fire chief time to, to check into all the details, I think it would be in best interest to table this until the next meeting.
Councilmember Avery?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion, second, Councilmember Jennings?
Well, just, just one question, uh, you mentioned timing on him being able to be here. Would it be better to do it two meetings or the next meeting, whichever one would be better?
Let's ask Kim and let him?
When, when is the second meeting?
When's the first meeting in February, Helen?
The 11th.
11th. You have a choice in the last Monday night in January or the, uh, second Monday night in, uh, February.
What are the dates?
January 28th.
January 28th?
I'll, I'll take that.
Or February the 11th.
They're too close, they no change.
Which of those two days would work better for you?
I'll take whatever.
The 28th?
They're very close.
Can you be back two weeks from tonight?
I'll try. I'm not going to leave, I'm going to stay here.
Is that sufficient? Councilmember Jennings?
That's all I need to know.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe you still have the public hearing open, so you may want to make sure that nobody else has any input tonight to table this.
Thank you. This discussion has gone longer than usual.
I remove my motion till we close.
Hey, do we have anyone else? Since the public hearing is still open, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this, uh, application? Okay, there being no one, uh, you may be seated if you'd like.
Thank you.
We're now ready for those motions and I believe, uh, your motion still stands as you expressed it a moment ago?
Yes, sir, I would like to leave the motion stated.
And you're second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any discussion? If you will register your vote, please. And that carries by unanimous vote and we come now to, we come now to the announcement events section. Uh, Councilmember Henderson, I believe you have an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The annual Halton Stampede is just around the corner, it's February the 9th, 2002. Uh, it's always a great success and, uh, looking for another great year. It's the lead-up race to, uh, the big Cal Town race in Fort Worth. And that's all.
Okay, uh, uh, Councilmember Williams, I believe you have, uh, an announcement or two?
I've got a few. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the Halton High School Quarterback Club for having myself and the mayor out to their banquet last Saturday night. Uh, they had out the fine arts, uh, building out in, uh, the east side of Tarrant County there and we really had a good time and, uh, it was real good to see all the students turned out and all the, uh, the boys and I believe there was five $1,000 scholarships had handed out. And, uh, the quarterback club had asked me to thank the city on behalf of them for allowing them to have a program called, "That Takes the City" this year, so, uh, our hats go off to them. Also, uh, I have a letter here from the Halton High School Fine Arts Department, will present a Broadway musical, Guys and Dolls. That'll be January the 24th, 26th, 27th, 28th and 29th. All those performances start at 7:30 with the exception of the Sunday matinee, which will be 3:00 PM. This musical production of Halton are considered by many of the best of the high schools and productions in the nation. This group has been chosen against stiff competition from many high schools to perform three times since 1999 in International Thespians Society Conference. The conference is the only national organization which honors secondary students for outstanding theater work. In 1997, out of 2,000 students and teachers attending the ground around the globe, Halton received a great honor as they were the only Texas show to perform on the main stage at the festival. So we'd like to invite everybody out to go see that. And, uh, I think that's it. Other, I have one other announcement, I have a lot of interest in me here lately as far as my email. I'd like to give my email address out, it's CC3@haltoncitytx.com. And the password is place5. So if anybody wants to see my email, they can go there and see it. Just type in place5 for the password and my email is open to everybody. Now, let's make it place3. David, I hope your email wasn't place5.
Place3 though, in case anybody?
I believe we have an announcement regarding the comprehensive land use plan hearing tomorrow. Uh, our city engineer, uh, if you will, come forward and make that announcement at this time.
I guess we've heard his name quite a bit tonight, but on behalf of James Pliska and the Planning Department, I'd like to personally invite everyone in the community to the Public Library tomorrow night, between 6:30 and 8:30. The Planning Department will be hosting along with our consultant and the Planning and Zoning Commission, the, uh, proposed land use plan for the future that they've currently developed. And they would very much like to hear the comments and concerns from the community.
Okay, this is a very important hearing, I hope everyone can attend. Uh, it's going to define the future of Halton City over the next five, 10, 15 years. Any other announcements? I have one I want to make at this time. I want to pay a compliment to our police department, our municipal judge and, uh, his municipal court staff. I was given a ticket here in Halton City back about a month ago. I was falling too close, uh, on a slick road and, uh, rear-ended the vehicle in front of me when the lady decided to turn without giving a signal. I've taken some kidding about this from my fellow elected officials about being the only mayor in Halton City history to ever be written a ticket while he was in office. I've been asked, uh, if the officer knew I was the mayor. He didn't. He was a new officer and that really wasn't an issue. I've been asked if I told the officer I was the mayor, and I didn't. I was asked by someone to give them the ticket and they'd handle it. I declined. I was told by my counterpart in an adjoining city that if I got a ticket in his city, bring it to him. It was very important to me as the mayor of this city that nobody fixed this ticket, that no deal be cut, that the mayor be held accountable to the same standard every other citizen in Halton City as hell too. It was very important to me that the police department and the municipal court follow established procedures regardless of who the person is, even if it's the mayor. I want to tell you that municipal court staff explained my options just like they did to everybody else. I wasn't moved to the head of the line, I wasn't given any special consideration that every other person in court that morning was given. I pleaded guilty because I was. And the judge gave me the same fine he gave other citizens for the same and similar offenses that day. I paid, uh, my $100 fine. And my insurance is going to go up 15% for the next three years and, uh, I've got a defensive driving course in my future. It was very important to me that I be treated just like any other citizen. It's important to me that our citizens know that we have policies and procedures and laws in place that apply equally to every citizen. And that even the mayor and every other elected official and their families are not above the law. And so my compliments to that young officer who wrote me the ticket. I understand he nearly had a heart attack when he found out who had written that ticket to, but I was guilty and I deserved it. And my compliments to him and to the municipal court staff and Judge Bino for moving me through the system and treating the mayor just like every other citizen. So, uh, next time you see the judge or the chief, uh, uh, they're doing their job, they did in this case, and, and I applaud them.
Mr. Mayor, is he working graveyard shift now?
I don't know. Any other announcements or events? We move now to item number 22, Mr. Elfrink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 22 was originally on the council agenda December the 10th. At that time, for some reason or another, the person who requested the item beyond there, who was representing the property owner, did not show up. And so we table it for tonight, but what this, uh, agenda item, uh, is about is regards the removal, the movement of a sewer lift station that was privately constructed many years ago at a location at the Halton Oaks Apartments, which is just to the east, about two blocks from city hall. Uh, as you all know, we have, uh, major reconstruction of Broadway Avenue underway. Now, uh, all of the utilities have been moved back out of the right of way. And what we have here primarily is a situation of, of setting a precedent. The property owner is requesting, uh, participation either full or in part by the city in the cost of moving this privately constructed lift station out of the right of way. And, uh, the council needs to consider the precedent this may set with regard to other businesses or residential properties that have privately owned items that are in the right of way, such as structural signs for, uh, different businesses. Our city engineer has been dealing with this issue for, I believe he stated, a bit over two years, trying to work out a solution and it basically, it's at a point now where the contractor who is working the construction, the reconstruction of Broadway Avenue states that we must deal with this very soon or it could result in some significant cost overruns to the project in the neighborhood of $50,000. And I believe our city engineer has estimated the cost of moving the lift station is approximately in that neighborhood of $45,000 to $60,000. With that, I'll let the council, uh, consider this item and our city engineer and perhaps Mr. Carol Nguyen is here to, uh, answer questions the council may have about this item.
Thank you, Mr. Elfrink. And Mr. Nguyen, if you would, come forward at this time and, uh, any comments you'd like to make to the council regarding this item on the agenda? And, uh, council may have a question or two for you, but, uh, tell us about the lift station?
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. My name's Carol Nguyen, I'm with Frontline Property Management, a real estate property management company located at 69, 6839C Green Oaks Road, Green Oaks Road in Fort Worth, Texas. Frontline Property Management is the management agent for Halton Oaks Apartments at 5151 Broadway and I'm here tonight representing the owner. I'm here this evening as requested by Mr. Greg Noonhugh, who's the city engineer for Halton City. I had planned to appear earlier, as you mentioned, but we were busy gathering information and as time passed, we never felt quite prepared to come and we didn't want to waste the council's time until we felt like we had something meaningful to discuss. Uh, as you know, Halton Oaks is at the intersection of Parker and Broadway Street, just a short distance to, to the east from here. It's more or less across the street from the police station. The matter that I'm here to comment on relates to a plat filed in the county records on or about November 4th of 1990. Uh, it was filed for the apparent purpose of granting an easement to Halton City. And a portion of that plat describes an easement on Broadway surroundings that is, quote, "to be dedicated for the purpose of providing for road improvements on Broadway." I've been told in a written statement by the owner developer that the easement was provided at no cost to the city. In addition, the owner developer stated in writing that he was not advised of any expense that could, would, or might accrue as a result of giving the property to the city. The portion of the plat relating to the road improvements has been a point of extensive discussion, uh, as, uh, Mr. Elfrink has pointed out, between the city staff and the owner as it relates to the lift station that's located in the easement. As you probably know, a lift station is a tank with a system of pumps that's necessary to pump sewage when the city, when the sewer line of a property is too high to allow the sewage to flow by gravity, uh, or it's not high enough to allow the sewage to flow by gravity into the main sewer line. In order to provide sewer service for Halton Oaks Apartments, a lift station was required at the time of construction, so it's been there since the property was built. According to the original developer, the city specifically instructed him where to put the lift station. That is, they wanted it in that specific spot, uh, primarily, I think, so they could keep a know of it and if there was a problem, they would be there. And of course, over the years, the city's really been helpful in helping us resolve or helping the owners from time to time resolve issues that may have come up with the lift station. The owners of Halton Oaks Apartments have maintained the lift station since the property was built and currently it's serving approximately 130 residents or citizens of Halton City who are being billed for their water and sewage usage through a program approved by the TNRC. It's the position of the city staff, as has been pointed out, that the lift station has to be moved as a result of the planned road improvements. And from the various discussions relating to the move, to move the lift station, the question has come up as to who should be responsible for the costs, the city or the owner. Question's been researched, it's been discussed and it's been debated by the city staff, the owner and some consultants for quite some time. And certainly it's gone on somewhat longer than either party anticipated and there were some legitimate reasons for that. The owner, uh, maintains however they should not be liable to move the lift station simply because the easement was granted and the land was granted to the city at no cost. The city accepted the lift station in the easement in 1990 for the purpose of improving the road. And at that time, they knew what the road, what it took to improve a road, that's why they asked for that specific easement. And at that time or since, there's never been a requirement stated to move the lift station. Uh, the owner at the time of the easement was not advised of any expense that would come out of having that lift station in the easement. In fact, there's some question in my mind if he ever knew it was there. Uh, the city has, uh, required the lift station, uh, to be moved, uh, to where it was, uh, the cost of the lift station is going to be quite high. It's somewhat beyond what is reasonable, as has been pointed out, for the average, uh, homeowner for sure and certainly even an apartment owner. It's a, it's an onerous expense to impose on someone, especially when there hasn't been disclosure. So in reality, the, the situation has created somewhat of a dilemma. And, uh, we've thought creatively about it and in a recent, in a meeting this past week, some options have arisen that could provide a solution to the problem. Frontline Property Management, uh, the owner and the engineer are reviewing the options from the owner's perspective and the city, of course, is reviewing the options from their perspective. But we're optimistic that a plan can be put together and be presented to the city council shortly and certainly in such time as to allow for the road improvements to progress without any kind of delay. The owner and the management company are very concerned about the matter and we look forward to a resolution. Further, the owner and the management company appreciate the patience of the city staff as we've had to learn about easements, uh, sewage processing and road improvements. The owner and management company also appreciate the assistance provided by the staff in explaining the road improvement process and all that's been involved. I'd also like to say that the owner of Halton Oaks Apartments is very pleased to be a part of the community here. He's indicated to me that it's his intention to keep Halton Oaks for a long time and he clearly believes in maintaining the property with a proud of ownership. Uh, if any of you in the city council have had any experience owning and managing rental properties, you know what a challenge that can be as we go through the economic cycles of the ups and downs of real estate. With Halton Oaks Apartments located closely to the city's administrative facilities, we believe it's important and indeed fortunate to have an owner that takes a proud of ownership and is approach to the real estate business. So in summary, uh, since the matter's taken longer to work out than expected, I'm here tonight to reassure the city council that the owner is committed to it and we're working diligently to, to resolve the situation and we believe that the solution is near. I bet more or less summarizes the situation. If you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I have one, uh, and then, Mr. Nguyen, and then we'll, uh, other members of the council may have. Tell, tell us in just one sentence or two what you're asking this council to do in regard to that lift station?
Well, my purpose here tonight, and as, as I understood was requested by Greg Noonhugh's, was to update the city council on where we stood. The owner feels like that the cost of the lift station is, is onerous and unreasonable to impose on an owner of that size. Ideally, we'd like to find some sort of solution where he, he would not have to pay to move it. You know, the ideal thing is to take the thing out and hook it to the sewer city line and we've talked to Greg about that and it's, it could be done, I guess, but somehow it doesn't seem practical. And we've talked about several solutions that might, you know, resolve the matter and that's what we're trying to work out now. Does that answer your question?
Yes, uh, a little more than one sentence, but I have a tendency to do the same thing, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No, no problem.
Thanks.
I don't think I asked you to give your name and address for the record earlier on. If you did, I have forgotten, would you?
Certainly, my name is Carol Nguyen. I'm with Frontline Property Management and the company address is 6839C Green Oaks Road in Fort Worth. in Fort Worth.
Okay. Thank you very much. Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Nguyen? Okay, thank you, Mr. Nguyen. What is the pleasure of the council regarding item number 22? Councilmember Jennings?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Greg, if he could come back out. He was ready to. Greg, what, what kind of timeframe are we up against here with, with the people working on the, the street? You know, do we have two days?
It's a pretty quick timeframe. It's by the end of April, which, we're already in mid-January, so that's three and a half months away.
Okay, and how long would it take to move the lift station once we decide, you know, we are in fact going to move it, where we're going to move it to, and who's going to pay for it? How long would that take?
Depending on weather, I, I think you could get a job like this done in 20 days, 15 to 20 days. But, but that's business day, so that would be, you know, three to four weeks.
Okay. It had been mentioned that some alternatives had been discussed. Has city staff sat down with the, with the property owner and discussed the possibility of actually doing away with this lift station?
We've discussed it, but, and I believe Mr. Nguyen indicated that it was not practical. And I don't know that those were the words I would use, but it's not possible because he would have to cross either a variety of private property, get easement from private property, or we'd have to relay sewer in Holtham Road or Broadway at a much deeper elevation, and then down Holtham Road at a much deeper elevation. I think when you look at the trade-off in cost for constructing sewer at that depth for those lengths, that you haven't gained anything.
And the figure that we arrived at in pre-council for the cost of moving this was $45,000 to $60,000, is that correct?
Right, and we arrived at that figure. Mr. Nguyen, I believe has hired an engineer to help him with this situation, and those were numbers that his engineer preliminarily felt comfortable stating. Did I get that correct?
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Members of the council, any further questions? There being none, any indicated, I'm ready to entertain a motion regarding item number Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I found Mr. Nguyen correctly. They said that at the present time, the owner is kind of trying to work out a, maybe compromise a solution that we can work together with the city and the property owner, and I'll be in line to say that we wait and see what the owner's got to offer, and try to do that as soon as possible, so we don't stop probably.
When you dabble?
Greg, do you feel comfortable that it can be accomplished?
If I may make a recommendation, what I might recommend is that the owner, let me back up. The, the question presently is who's going to pay for the relocation? The, and I believe those are the avenues that the owner's going to pursue. If there's some city funds, county funds, federal funds, I'm not sure. He's looking for, and some type of avenue to help him with that cost. The next problem is, once this lift station's relocated, who's going to continually maintain it? Both Mr. Kendrick, our director of public works, and myself have discussed this with our water and sewer department, and we're willing to take over maintenance of the, this facility. We're probably a little bit more apt to maintain such a facility than a private residential-type property owner. So, we've, we've crossed that hurdle. Once it's reconstructed or relocated in accordance with our standards, we'll take care of it. But the first hurdle seems to be the major hurdle, and that is who's going to pay for it. It would be my recommendation that, that they pursue whatever avenues that they desire to pursue, however, that the, that they're responsible for its relocation. So, if, if they are able to get funding from another entity, well then, great. But even if they're not, you know, well, they're not so great, but they still have to relocate the facility. That way, it doesn't have to come back to you, and that way, you know, we can start moving on with this project.
Anything further? Councilmember Patino? Councilmember Jennings?
Mr. Mayor, I, I can't see having the citizens of Holtham City pay $45,000 to $60,000 to move this, so if you're in line for a motion, I'd be willing to make one.
We're ready to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that the relocation of the lift station, the cost thereof, be delegated to the property owner, and that the city of Holtham City could enter into an agreement to maintain that property, that, that lift station, once it is in fact moved, but that we should not participate in the cost thereof.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Councilmember Evert, your light was on first.
I'll second Councilmember Jennings' motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion on this item? There being none, if you will register your votes, I will display them, and that carries by unanimous vote. The next item on the agenda is a request for the council to give consideration to rescinding a previous vote. Now, let me give you just a little background in regard to this. In the last council meeting, the council voted to change the name of the municipal animal shelter from the Holtham City Animal Care and Adoption Center to the Nancy P. Watkins Center for Animal Care and Adoption. The request that is before the council tonight is that the name be returned to the Holtham City Animal Care and Adoption Center. Since I'm the one who requested this item be placed on the agenda, I will speak first, explaining why I believe my request is appropriate and in the best of interest of Holtham City at this time. After I've made my presentation, we have, we have three citizens who have filled out speakers cards, who have asked to address the council on this issue, and they'll be given an opportunity to speak. Once that is completed, I'll ask for a motion and a second from the council to either rescind or uphold the previous vote. And once the motion is made and seconded, the council then will discuss the motion, and when discussion is finished, the council will vote on that issue. I've been asked why I didn't speak up when this issue was proposed, if I had concerns. I started to at the time, and then I thought better. The motion at the last council meeting caught me by surprise, since there had been no previous discussion about changing the animal shelter's name. And since the person whose name was proposed was my opponent in the last election, I decided it'd be better if I gave that some thought and chose my words carefully before I spoke, lest I come across sounding petty or, or personal. I want to, to state for the record that my concern, and you'll see that as I present my explanation, has nothing whatever to do with the fact that the person whose name was proposed was my opponent last May. I would raise the same issue regardless of who that person might be. One of the concerns I have is that in the 50-year history of Holtham City, that it's been in existence, we have never named a city facility after an individual. Elected officials at every step along the way have exercised great restraint, and they've not opened this Pandora's Box and put themselves and future councils on a slippery slope where nobody wins, when you get into the emotion of having someone's name attached to a facility. I have no problem with us thinking outside the box, with changing the way we do things, and if you know my leadership style, that's one of the things that I advocate on an ongoing basis. Think outside the box. Just because you've always done something doesn't mean we ought to continue to do it. There may be a better way. If there is, let's look at it. I have no problem with us changing, with us thinking outside the box, but if there's to be a departure from 50 years of accepted practice in Holtham City, we should at least have some discussion before we act. Now, this idea came up on the spur of the moment, without previous discussion, without the benefit of thinking through what we were doing, or without exploring the ramifications of our actions. It is my judgment as mayor that the previous action was premature, and that's why I'm asking the council, just very simply, let's go back, let's start the process over, and let's do it right. And I believe that rescinding a previous vote is a reasonable course of action, and I believe that's in the best interest of Holtham City. My second concern is precedent, and our city manager mentioned that a moment ago with regard to how we address this lift station issue. Precedent, very, very important concept. Now, if we change the name of the animal shelter to honor a previous mayor because she loved animals and was a driving force behind the facility being constructed, will this council also be willing to change the name of the Senior Citizen Center to the Johnny B. Lee Senior Citizen Center, and the Law Enforcement Center to the Gary W. Larson Law Enforcement Center, and the Water Tower Fire Station to the Jack O. Lewis Water Tower and Fire Station? Since they were also previous mayors who were passionate about senior citizens, law enforcement, and public safety, and who were also driving forces behind those facilities being constructed? That's a question that we're confronted with when we set a precedent. Now, each of these former mayors had the votes to name those facilities, what I have just mentioned, at the time they were constructed. But they, and the councils around them, wisely chose not to go there. I think the council discussed but chose not to name Holtham Road Park the Jim Pride Moore Park, even though that park was Jim's vision. Jim was a gentleman. He was a council member, a highly respected community leader, who if anybody ever deserved to have a facility named after him, it was Jim. And I think the council discussed but chose not to name the Law Enforcement Center the Gary Hires Law Enforcement Center. And those of you who are here, remember that Officer Hires was a hero, in the highest sense of the word, the greatest hero probably to emerge in the history of Holtham City. A hero, a real hero, who gave his life defending our city. And if anyone ever deserved to have a facility named after him, it was Officer Hires. And what about councilmember Jimmy Hayden, who served this city as a council member for what, 25 years or, or longer during the early days of our city? The question becomes, doesn't he also deserve to have a facility named after him if we're going to establish this precedent? And the list goes on and on of deserving people that could have had city facilities named in their honor, but for over 50 years of city councils in Holtham City, they believed it is not in the best interest of Holtham City to do so. Now, we have several new facilities that will be built over the next few years that are going to have to be named something. And that's why I'm asking, as the mayor of Holtham City, that this council reconsider the precedent it has set. I believe it's in the best interest of Holtham City for the council to rescind its previous vote, to go back, to start over, and do this right, to do like we did when we named Buffalo Ridge Park and Pecan Park. Get the citizens involved, get their input, get them involved in naming the facilities. Let them make the suggestions. Have a community-wide contest. I think it was a little over a year ago that, when members of the Burglum Baptist Church approached the city about changing the name of one block long Walker Street, which runs down the middle of their property, to Dwayne Green Avenue in honor of their soon-retiring, long-tenured pastor, before it was discovered that Walker Street had historical significance, I believe the previous mayor said, "We're not going to start naming things in Holtham City after people." What the mayor said was right then, and it's still right today. I want to read an email I received recently. This email was sent to councilmembers Williams and Jennings, and it was copied to me. It's from a highly respected citizen who has lived in Holtham City for a long time and who is knowledgeable of the Holtham City scene, and who is a close friend and supporter of the previous mayor. I quote, "Dear Phil and John, first let me say I love Nancy Watkins. I am proud to have her as a friend and a business associate. I agree we probably would not have a new animal shelter were it not for her hard work. However, to name a building after her or any other living person is a bad thing. It smacks of cronyism, which already haunts your council. Your intent is noble, Nancy did a great job for this city, and has a special place in her heart for animals. Thank God for people like her, but please reconsider what you're doing. This is not a good precedent, and it will lead to problems down the road." Now, this sentiment is consistent with what I've been hearing over the past month from people on both sides of the political spectrum in Holtham City. Therefore, members of the council, for the reasons I've just given, I'm asking the council to give consideration to rescind its previous vote, so we can go back, start over, think this issue through, and do it right when we do take action. I believe this is a reasonable request, and that it's in the best interest of Holtham City. Thank you for your patience in my rather long explanation. We'll move forward now to the second thing I mentioned a moment ago, and that is the citizens who have requested to address the subject. The first is Jimbo White. Mr. White, if you'll come forward and address the council, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jimbo White. I live at 5220 Ira Street. And, Mr. Mayor, knowing your special feeling for punctuality, I wrote a four-minute and 59-second speech here, but I think I'm going to ad lib this one. Just seeing this on the agenda upsets me. It's pure cronyism and jealousy. And you know, you mentioned things named after prominent Holtham Cityans. I could think of over 30. The Burglum Independent School District has 12 schools named. And during your tenure, did you have any of them? Did you change any of those names, those schools? David E. Smith, John Spicer. I can think of just, like I say, over 30 things that's named after prominent Holtham Cityans. Now, whether or not it was the city council who did it, or the Burglum Independent School District Board who did it, never mind that, it was done for prominent Holtham Cityans. And I think this is nothing but a political ruse, and it reeks of cronyism and political... I don't even want to finish. I think it's pitiful that it's on the agenda, and I urge each and every one of the council members to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. The next person who has requested, Ron Sturgeon.
I'm going to do the script. I'm here to speak on items concerning, I'm sorry, my name is Ron Sturgeon, the address is 5940 Eden. Mayor and council, I'm here to speak on the issues concerning the renaming of the animal shelter. I was concerned when I read about this in the paper for two reasons. First, I know that Ms. Watkins was an animal lover and worked hard to see the center happen. I only knew her as mayor and have never met her prior to her service to the city as mayor. The bigger issue for me is that I wonder if, if this is, is all our city officials have to work on, a partisan discussion about an issue that was previously decided in this public forum. Is the council going to be reconsidering and revising other decisions from prior sessions as well? If they have time to be going back and reconsidering prior decisions, let's focus on things like bond issues or street repairs, and only because the surrounding, the circumstances surrounding those decisions have actually changed. I have to believe this is nothing more than a partisan effort by some in our government, either past or present. I don't want to belittle any decision this council makes, or even question what issues are here for discussion, but I doubt our elected officials, which work for almost no pay, have time to reconsider items like this. And I have to believe our city budget does not have... And I have to believe our city budget does not have the funds to sustain staff's work to research, post, and publish such matters in any volume. I read with interest the mayor's comments that we had never named a city building after someone. Is our city completely immune to change? And isn't this change somewhat innocuous compared to many of the real issues our city faces in this 21st century? If we can't deal with changes like this, we are in big trouble on the more important matters. I too am an animal lover, and am confident that the council was informed at the time they made this decision, and can envision what additional facts might come to light other than partisan motives. It concerns me when I hear that our mayor believes this decision was made in haste. I like to think this panel never makes decisions in haste, or when they're not fully informed. Although he presides over that meeting, I have to believe this panel was fully informed when they approved this name, and I hope they'll do the same thing again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. Our next speaker, Jim Sutton. Jim, if you will, give your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Jim Sutton. I reside at 5792 Fenway Court. In a way, I feel like I'm approaching a commission with men, their minds are made up, but I beg you to just listen to me for a second. One of your charges as a city council and a city commission is to promote unity and to promote a good feeling among the citizens, to promote that type of unity that we desire here in Halton City. And the former speaker talked about there being a public forum open for this, and I think that this decision came rather hastily, as the mayor has talked about, without the indication that there might be another way to do this, that there might be something that the citizens wanted for this. Now, it's true that Nancy Watkins is an animal lover, I know that. And I think everybody that knows Nancy knows that she loves animals, and that's great. But I want to charge you, if naming a building after a former mayor creates a lot of controversy in the city, are you fulfilling the charge of the councilman that you were elected to be? And the second thing is, if you want to honor a former mayor, which I think is a good thing to do, is this the best way to do it in a way that brings unity and peace to this city? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. And our final speaker with a card, Mr. Jack Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jack Lewis. I live at 4600 Sable. And I agree you have said it well, Mayor. Jim has said it well. And one of the former speakers, one of them who does not live in the city, has no problem with this... Well, I had a problem with it being on the agenda. Well, I have a problem with it not being on the agenda, and the meeting in which this decision was made without public discussion. And as you have said, and I won't spend a lot of time on that, since I believe Councilman Jennings was quoted in the paper already, and this is a quote, "If we do review it, I will make the exact same motion, word for word, and I predict the outcome will be the same." Well, I predict the outcome will be the same regardless of what the citizens feel in this city because of the word "cronyism" that has been mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We're now ready. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure regarding this? The issue before us is, do we rescind the previous vote, or do we uphold? No, it's not a public hearing. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure regarding item number 23?
Mayor, seeing there's no action on this, don't you think we should move on to the next item?
The floor is still open for a motion regarding the pleasure of the council to either uphold or to rescind the previous vote. I will ask one final time, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item number 23? Since the council chooses not to stand up and speak regarding the issue of the request of the mayor to give consideration to rescinding the previous vote, and back up and start the process all over again, for the purpose of our meeting tonight, the record will show that the council took no action, and the mayor will request that this item be placed on the next council agenda. With that, we move forward to the boards and commissions. I believe we have a couple of resignations of board members. Councilmember Avery?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I have the resignation of Walter Layton from the Crime Prevention Board, and I will give that to the city secretary before we leave this evening.
Okay. If you will, gentlemen, will you ratify the resignation of Mr. Walter Layton as indicated by Councilmember Avery? And if you'll register your vote, that will show unanimous vote. Councilmember Williams, I believe you have a resignation as well.
Yes, this is from Sherri Dunn, 2016 Owen Street, Halton City. Dear Helen and council, I want to thank the council for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the Crime Prevention Board. When I was elected to the school board, it was my intention to maintain both duties, but with conflicting means, I have not been able to do so. I truly value the experience and learning more on how the city operates. The weeks of training in the Citizens Police Camp is very enlightening. I wish all of our citizens to benefit from that program. Therefore, it is with much regret that I resign my position to the crime board. Sincerely, Sherri Dunn. And I'll pass this to, I think, the city secretary, or Hanson.
Okay, you have the resignation of Ms. Sherri Dunn from the crime board. We need a ratification of that, if you would, at this time, gentlemen. And that carries by unanimous vote. We have a couple of appointments to make tonight. Councilmember Williams, I believe you have an appointment.
I have Mary Cox of Meadow Oaks Drive, and she has been serving as a liaison to the Crime Prevention Board, and I think the secretary has her application on record. Is that right, secretary? And so, I would like to make a motion that we appoint her to that board. She's been an excellent member on that board, and I think she would be quite an asset to have her as a full-time member.
You have heard Councilmember Williams' appointment to the crime board. If you will, vote to ratify, and that carries by unanimous vote. The final appointment is a mayor's appointment to the Parks and Recreation. It's my pleasure to present the name of Roland Coolman. You have that in your packet. He comes highly recommended by the chairman of the Parks and Recreation, and it's my pleasure to present him for ratification at this time. If you would indicate, and that carries by unanimous vote. The final action we have before we adjourn into executive session is the attendance requirement. You notice our council member in place seven was not here tonight. He has the flu, and I expect that is probably an excused absence, but I'll entertain a motion regarding accepting that. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I talked to Mr. Markham about four o'clock this afternoon, and he is terribly ill. Our prayers go out with him. I make a motion, will you excuse his absence, please?
Have a motion, or have a second? Councilmember Henderson?
I'll take it, ma'am.
We have a motion second, if you will. Register your vote, and that is a unanimous vote. We will move at this time into executive session pursuant to section 551.071, .072, and .074. And any action the council takes, we'll come back and open session for that. The record will show it's ten...